Morning everyone and welcome to this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council. Mount Isa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. And I'd also like to extend that respect to any of Australia's First Nations people in attendance today. Please note, this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meeting policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I would now like to invite Pastor George to come and grace us with a prayer today.
Thank you, thank you very much, my honour to be together with us and start off with a prayer. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful opportunity that we have to talk together for things that are going to build our love and build our community. We ask that you, President, in this meeting, lead us, show us the way, enlighten our way, and be with us today. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor George.
Thank you.
That takes us now to item three, which is apologies and leaves of absence. Do we have any councillors who are away today? Councillor Coghlan, Councillor Tully and Councillor Streton?
Yes, they've all put in leave and apologised prior.
Do you want to move a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move a motion that we grant leaves of absence to Councillor Tully, Councillor Streton and Councillor Coghlan.
Thank you, Councillor McCrae, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune, all those in favour? And that's carried. I'd now like to suspend proceedings and offer public participation. It might be easier on the livestream if you got up.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to address the council today. Very concerned about the crime rate that's happening in Mount Isa and we're getting crucified by Facebook and everything. Their trip advisor advising caravanners to stay in Camerewell or Cloncurry and just fill up with petrol and Mount Isa move on. And we're not coming back at them. They can say whatever they like and it's killing us. It's just terrible, it's affecting accommodation places and everything because people are advised not to come. And I've known instances where a group were organising and they pulled out because they wouldn't come to Mount Isa. And I'm just wondering, can the council have a meeting and come to us some plan that we can... We want to organise a community meeting and see how we can tackle it because they say children under seventeen don't know right from wrong. I say children from four, it's in you, you know what you should do and what you shouldn't do. And I want to push name and shame. We've got to name the children who are committing these terrible repeated crimes, the parents who are getting government money to look after their children, they're not, they're gambling and drinking. And we've got to name the parents, the grandparents, because everyone says, oh, they haven't got any parents, family are looking after them, but people are getting child welfare from the government, from the federal government, and they're not doing their job. We've got to step in and show a voice. People got a voice saying what a terrible place Mount Isa is. We've got to have a counteract, counteract that and fight back and show what we're doing to fight this terrible crime rate. So, sorry about that, but anyway, that's my opinion. I'm just wondering how much it costs the council to put these elaborate solar signs on the river crossings, Davis Road and Elmhurst Street? The other, last week when we were having all that rain, or two weeks ago, one sign was flashing and road is closed. Up the other end, Bunnings End, it wasn't on because the river was just trickling and there was nowhere near the danger of closing the road. And I'm wondering, well, if that happens again, is there a contact number that people can come and correct it or who controls it now that they're up there? And what else do I have to say? I'm sorry to take up the time. Yeah, mainly the flashing lights, wondering how much it costs. Did we get assistance from the state government? Because they're very elaborate, it's fantastic, but very expensive also. And can someone, is someone contactable if one of them's... If they do play up at some stage and start flashing for no reason? Because one end was flashing and the other end wasn't. What set that off? Just wondering if the councillors could look into that and make it public if people can report if there is a problem.
Thanks Peter. Can I start with your second question first? And I'll hand over to our Director for Infrastructure, Stephen Gill, and get him to answer that second question first.
The flood crossings were paid for by QRA, a statewide initiative. There's dozens of them in the western part of the state. Proximate cost for seven crossings was about six hundred thousand in the finish, but we managed the installation, but it didn't cost council any money other than that management cost. They will eventually operate completely automatically, they've only recently been put in. They were commissioned to make sure that their power works and they work etc. Very unusual to have rainfall in July sufficient to bring it over the crossings, so they're actually not completely finished. When I say they're not completely finished, the last thing that has to be done is we need to take the levels on the causeway and set the level at which we want the thing to turn on and off. So when it rained, they were turned on remotely. We just turned them all on and they were on too long and then we turned them all off. So that was a little bit, we were caught out a little bit there, but that's not a real concern because the old ones were all done manually, had to be turned on and off and historically they were always turned on either too early or too late, then turned off again way after the water gone simply because somebody had to go around there, so it wasn't all that satisfactory. This was better and will get better when we set the levels.
Thank you very much Frank. Mount Isa City Council put on your website that that was paid for, wasn't it? Ratepayers expensive, because that's fantastic, fabulous signs. I thought, oh, the cost, you know, rates will go up. So I think Mount Isa City Council should be, make it well known that, you know, it was paid by the government or something, which was fantastic.
We do put a lot out there. The difficulty for us is we no longer have a printed paper, so getting our message out has proved really difficult over the last couple of years. And some people will say, I didn't know the free concert was on on Sunday. And I said, well, it wasn't from us, you know, trying to help promote it, we certainly did. So it is very difficult. And if you're not on social media, I don't know how you get news in this domain.
I know, it's very hard. It's hard for everything, but that's wonderful, it was subsidised, fabulous. But let the ratepayers know, make a big thing of it on your Facebook.
Thank you. And with regard to crime in the city, one of the things that is happening is caravan parks are getting targeted. And we have a lot of tourists that come in, park up, and they must feel like they're in a gated community because they tend not to lock up. So they have been targeted because kids are going in there and the vans are not locked, the cars aren't locked. So I know the caravan park owners are doing a lot of work to try and say to tourists, you know, it's like if you were in Brisbane, you wouldn't unlock your car and leave it unlocked or you wouldn't leave your front door unlocked. And that's just how Mount Isa is at the moment, it's more opportunist. With a lot of the robberies that are happening, it's very opportunist. So it's people, you know, having that gate open, the front door open, those sort of things. So that's one of the things, messages I know the police are trying to get across to the public is just, you know, lock up. One of the things I did at a council meeting on the 14th of December is I put forward a merrill minute and I'll just read it to you, just so you know, I just don't want you to think we're not on to this. And this is what I put forward, is as you're aware, there are a range of concerns in Mount Isa community regarding public safety, crime and the parliamentary inquiry recommending of decriminalising public drunkenness and the supply standard and location of social housing and other housing. I want to acknowledge the financial and emotional toll this has taken on the community as this isn't usual for Mount Isa. Mount Isa is experiencing a high level of public drunkenness from hundreds of visitors who have left their homes and the communities and are coming to Mount Isa and either camping illegally in a Likehart River or overcrowding friends and family in local housing. As a lifelong Mount Isa person and now Mayor of the city, I believe we need a coordinated whole government and whole of community approach to the problems we are currently facing. It's time to identify and assess what actions which have been implemented successfully in other regions and cities and towns and develop a model based on the problems being experienced in the city that would work best for Mount Isa in the future. Importantly, there will need to be a commitment to identifying the government and community stakeholders who would be willing and able to work with the council to establish the best future model for Mount Isa. Importantly, of course, the above work would ideally complement our current advocacy and other actions and certainly does not mean that any of these should be put on hold. It also doesn't mean that council will be committing to a greater funding contribution to address social issues in the city. However, council leadership and collaboration with other, all levels of government, traditional owners and non-for-profit and local community efforts is what is expected. For now, I suggest that council's decision to port the recent North West Queensland Regional Organisation of Councils Resolution Regarding the Proposed Decriminalisation of Intoxification, Begging and Public Urination in a Public Place summarised as follows. And that just goes on to talk about vulnerable people and the resolution we put forward. Since then, I have met with the Premier of Queensland and one of her commitments, and there was a few, was a youth co-responder team which was established about a month ago. And that team will drive around after hours, there'll be a police officer in the car, there'll be someone representing youth justice and they will be engaging with kids on the street or in their areas. So basically trying to get to the children before things escalate. The other thing that was set up was a United Response Working Group where it has agencies from Datzip, NIDA, police and some NGOs and some traditional owners involved. And they've been meeting regularly. I also, since that meeting, we have had a steady stream of state government people, including ministers, come through Mount Isa. And the other thing I've been doing is I've been working with the Mayor of Townsville, Jenny Hill, and the Mayor of Cairns, Bob Manning. And not only have we got together and talked about similar issues, but we have sat down with the Deputy Premier and he's made a commitment to invite us to the table as stakeholders in decisions going forward. I've also talked to the Assistant Minister for Indigenous Affairs and that is Mulleran Derry McCarthy. And she's a Senator for Northern Territory and she's also the Assistant Minister for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders. And I filled her in on our situation and also talked about the banned drinkers register. I've also engaged with police, youth justice, the Allicord, the Director General and the Deputy Director General of DS Datzip, the Deputy Director General of Communities, the Regional Manager for National Indigenous Australians Agencies. So as a council, we are definitely looking into... We know we've got a seat at the table. The other thing I've done is I've talked to the police and about... And police engagement about what type of public forum could we have in Mount Isa? Because there is the echoes in the community to have a public forum. And they have sent me basically a bit of a model on what we could do to, so the community comes to a, like a town hall meeting, but it's not about just having, this is what's happened to me, it's having some real positive engagement with all the stakeholders who are trying to combat this. And that would be the police, housing, you know, NGOs. And it would be, there'd be opportunities for presentations, but also one-on-ones. So if you have, you know, continually been robbed, maybe that's not the forum to talk about it in that meeting, but you could actually go to the side and talk to the police about, this is what's happening to me. And you may even be able to get some sort of support if it's really impacting on you personally. So that's a model I've been sent and I'm looking at how we could roll that out as a council to sort of let the community know what's out there and what supports are there and what's currently happening. I think as you know, the youth crime is happening, not just in Queensland, but around Australia. And there isn't going to be a quick fix. But I am very hopeful with the amount of support that's coming in from the state government that we're on that road. And that's where we are at the moment, you know. So there's a lot of people trying to do, fix this situation. And I know if you're a community member, you want it fixed right now. So it's something that's happening and I can see it happening, but I know the community can't. So that's why I'd love to do this forum, so the community can see what is happening, what some of the strategies are and perhaps, and also get some feedback from the community because who knows our city better than the people who live in it? So that's what we're up to Peter. Thank you very much for coming in. I know we've got to keep moving on because we're already twenty minutes in, but I just want to thank you so much for coming in. I always appreciate community members coming in and raising the issues and it keeps us honest.
Can I please add something, Madam Mayor? Just a point that Peter raised and it's something that seems obvious. I know Peter, you said that children from four-year-olds know right and wrong. But coming from an early childhood background, they know right or wrong if they've been taught what's right or wrong from their parents. A lot of children just aren't getting taught that. So we really need policy and programmes too to target early childhood and some sort of intervention to help our young people.
Absolutely.
One thing I could have mentioned, I'd just like to know, when you have a private discussion with the councillors altogether, this name and shame, because the parents got to be held responsible or the grandparents. So they say, oh, they've got no parents. Well, the grandparents, someone's getting child welfare, that should be stopped when they're committing a crime and that should go through their retraining to get them back into the community. They're all getting this child welfare, but they're spending it at the clubs and on alcohol instead of putting food in the fridge. The children are unwanted in their houses, so it's a home issue. And I feel the council should be pushing this name and shame. And thank you for your...
What you've just read out.
Very good.
Thank you. And look, this is legislated, you know, children's have protections and rightly so. You know, so that, I get what you're trying to say, but that just is something that would never be considered. But I'm open to ideas from the community and our job is a very big advocacy role. So if, you know, keep coming up with ideas, that one just wouldn't happen because of human rights. Yeah, but I get what you're trying to say, so. Very quickly, because we're running behind time.
There's been less tourists. And I've been speaking to them, they said, we can't even stop at Camerewell anymore. We can't stop at Mount Isa, we go through. And I'm trying to change their minds. Camerewell, there's no place to stay. We've closed the areas where they can free stay, haven't we?
Just temporarily, it's just a temporary measure at the moment, so we'll be opening up. But there is plenty of places to stay in Camerewell. And in fact, the local businesses would, you know, make them very welcome. I don't believe the charges are that expensive. And I think what was happening is that people weren't just overnighting there, they were staying for three or four months, you know, which is...
All right, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm trying to push Camerewell because I've been there, I've seen a lot of things, including caves and everything.
Absolutely. Camerewell's an untapped treasure.
But they pass it, so I think we should have signs. We should have signs to show what's there. I try and give them brochures and all this and outback in also.
Thank you and thank you for promoting tourism, I really appreciate that. Okay, so that now just takes us to item five, which is the confirmation of previous minutes meetings. And item five point one, which is the minutes of the special meeting held on the 21st of June 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor. Thanks that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 21st of June 2023 be confirmed as a true and correct record.
Thank you, Councillor Barwick, can I get a second for that motion?
I'm second.
Thank you, Councillor McCrae. Any comments on this one?
Madam Mayor, that's the special meeting we held just before the ordinary meeting last month for, you know, approving the budget for next year, so it's all straightforward, thanks.
Thank you. Item six, which is actions from... Oh, all those in favour? Got that one. Carried. Item six, which is actions from previous council meetings.
Five point two, Madam Mayor.
Oh, did I miss that?
And five point three.
Sorry about that. Five point two, which is the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 21st of June 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'd like to move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 21st of June 2023 be confirmed as true and correct record.
Thank you, Councillor McCrae, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. Any comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. Item five point three, which is the minutes of the special meeting held on the 29th of June 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 29th of June 2023 be confirmed as a true and correct record.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, Councillor McCrae. Any comments on this one?
No, sorry Madam Mayor, but we might just need to go back and do five point two. I was just trying, I know I was at the Country University Centre Conference for one of those meetings and it was five point two, the one that I just moved.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just trying to look down to see which one I had missed, it was that one.
Okay. So I'll need another second.
Another mover, I think, for five point two.
All right, so it was a mover, was it? All right, would someone like to move five point two, the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, okay, thanks, I can move, Madam Mayor. That the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 21st of June 2023 be confirmed as a true and correct record.
And can I get a second for that?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, that takes us to item three, five point three. The minutes of the special meeting held on the 29th of June 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I've moved, Madam Mayor, but I'm happy to remove that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 29th of June 2023 be confirmed as a true and correct record.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, Councillor McCrae, any comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so item six is actions from previous council meetings. Six point one, outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the 19th of July 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the Chair, I'll move the recommendation that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as at the 19th of July 2023.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
McCrae? And any comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Councillors, I invite you to declare any conflicts of interest that you have seen with the agenda.
Nil.
Nil.
Chair, I've got a conflict at fourteen point four, which is in confidential business concerning a waiver of headworks. So yeah, I'll be stepping out of the room, thanks.
Will we have a quorum for that?
We'll deal with that later.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Madam Mayor, can I declare?
Yep, thank you. Okay, thank you, fourteen point one. And that takes us to item eight, which is a merrill minute. And I think it was probably good timing that Peter Bolger came in and talked about youth crime. I just want to remind residents that with regard to youth crime or any crime, please call the police. Please do not try to take on whoever it is, even if they're small children. Don't follow them, just please call the police. There's no amount of property or personal belongings that is worth your health or an injury or life. So my biggest recommendation is if you suspect anyone's breaking in or there's any crime, please call triple O. And if it's not urgent, then please call the Mount Isa Police. The second thing is I just want to acknowledge that Australia is holding the Women's World Cup in Australia, which kicks off tomorrow night with the Matildas. This is history in the making and I think the game kicks off at 8pm tomorrow night. If anyone wants to tune in, you'll be watching the Australian women's team, who will probably go on to win this World Cup, that's my prediction. So good luck to the Matildas. Okay, that takes us to item nine, which is the reading and consideration of correspondence, which is nil. And then we'll go over to item ten, which is the, ten point one, which is the update of register of delegations for council to CEO. Would someone like to move the council recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council adopt the update register of delegations, council to CEO version five.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, any comments on this one?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, this is a revised delegation register and concerns the delegations by our council to the CEO for managing transactions and activities of council. It's a two-part process, so there's delegations to the CEO and then also the CEO to other staff to authorise the legal conduct of their duties and allow decision-making at an operational level. So the list is quite large, it's been reviewed and I'm advised it's attached to the docs on tap here and also to, will be uploaded to the council website. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us to ten point two, which is the Audit and Risk Committee, appointment of a chairperson. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I can do that. I'd like to move that councillor appoint Kerry Phillips to the position of independent chair for the Audit and Risk Committee for the remainder of term of this council for a period of two years with the option for a further two years upon satisfactory review. And that Mr Jeff King be thanked for his service as the independent chair.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune, any comments on this one, councillor?
Yes, I'm not on the Audit and Risk Committee, however, I do attend the meetings as an observer and I think Kerry has done a very good job on that committee in the past and look forward to seeing her as the independent chair.
Absolutely. And just wish Jeff King all the very best and thank him for the huge contribution he's made to Mount Isa.
Through the Chair, I'll just add, yeah, my... Through the Chair, I'll just add, yeah, my, my, you know, a commendation to Mr King, to Jeff King for holding that position since two thousand and nineteen as a chair. So he was, he's really stabilized the, the internal audit committee. And Kerry Phillips has been a welcome addition to that as well. And it's one of the reasons that she's been selected for this position is to ensure continuity and stability for the committee to carry out its work within council. So this will create another vacant position on the committee, so it'll, that'll be filled in due course as well. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. This now takes us to item ten point three, which is the MIKO adoption of documentation and E O, sorry, E O I chair. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council adopt the recommended changes to the constitution of the Mount Isa City Council owned enterprises proprietary limited and that council adopt the Mount Isa City Council owned enterprises MIKO board charter and that council call for an expression of interest to fill the role of the MIKO independent chair.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, fortune.
Councillor Fortune. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. This comes about in ensuring independence at the board level for MIKO. I've been a director of MIKO for seven to eight years now and also the last three or four of that as the interim chair. While we've made some operational changes and a range of other actions to, you know, support the enterprise. So I believe the Outback at Isa is in a good sort of a position now to be able to hand over to a independent chair and for them to pick up and run that. So, so this, this motion brings it, you know, quite into step with all of that. So the only outstanding item that I'm aware of that it needs to be dealt with, which is ninety-eight percent complete now, is the sign off of the service level agreement with council between MIKO and Mount Isa City Council. So personally, I'm quite proud of where it's at now. And, you know, presently now we've added the new indigenous tourist offerings as well. So there's quite a, you know, we add that to our state of the art sort of the underground mining tours and the rivers leaf fossils tours as well, which are quite iconic in the area. So I think it's in a really good position now for an independent chair and the committee to add other directors to it now to take that to the next level. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any comments?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to say that this goes in line with the recommendations of moving towards like a L T O down the track was to have the independence at Outback at Isa. So yeah, I've read, read through all of the recommendations and yeah, I think it'll be a great opportunity to get some professional tourism people on that board moving forward and it'll be great for Mount Isa tourism.
The only thing I, I, I sort of want to query is just recently, we've changed the, I'm, I'm an observer on the committee and I noticed that now I, I can't participate until the last twenty minutes. And for me, as mayor and a councillor, we, we give a lot of money over to MIKO. So sort of, I know I do get the minutes and I can read through, but I don't, I'm sort of in the last twenty minutes. And I honestly thought as mayor I'd be expatiose though, so I'd be able to be there for the entire meeting, so.
Can I comment? Yes, Madam Mayor, tourism is my portfolio and I'm in the same situation because they have been having the in-camera sessions, I guess, to get this organized. But reading through the charter here, it, it says that the mayor would be ex, what the word you just said? A standing member that they could come along and observe. So yeah, I think you'll, you'll be happy with, if you read through all of that.
Well, I did read that, but I just wondered, does that mean I still have to come in for the last twenty minutes?
No, it means you're standing in.
Because I've already got that power and I'm not, I'm not able to get in there until the last twenty minutes, so I'm just confused on that one.
Yeah, so Madam Mayor, we've made some changes operating the board level. The first thing was to have some in-camera meetings with directors only, which is quite normal under board conditions. And then to invite the ex-officios in post that, you know. So we also wanted to give the manager the opportunity to talk through his report with directors without, you know, having too much sort of direction from, from outside the board. So those, those kind of things are quite reasonable in my view and at board level. However, the new chair may, may well have a different view and allow more people. But I, I think it's been good for the management, it's been good for the organization and all of the critical things. The minutes are provided back to council, so there's nothing untoward, all the resolutions. It just gives people an opportunity to be able to do their work.
Yeah. Look, you know, we make a substantial contribution to MIKO and that's why I sort of like to be there for the entire meeting. And are we able to check if I should, am I allowed to be there for the entire meeting? Because.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Just, just to address that, all the financials are provided, you know, when there's ex-officios there. And, you know, they talk through with the, welcome to have the council accountants there. And they're also, as you're aware, they're all audited and everything.
Yeah. Oh, look, definitely, I, I see the minutes, it's transparent in that way, but I just would like to be at the meeting for the entire one if I'm unable to go. So that would be something I'd like to check.
So through the Chair, Deputy Mayor, ex-officios, so they will be in, in camera in moving forward according to the constitution or they won't be?
Well, in my view, if you, and in-camera is usually directors only, so not even the managers are there unless they're invited in.
So current practice will continue then?
Yeah, well, that's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah. So, see, I wouldn't be comfortable with that, you know, because we could end up with a board that has no councillors on it and then we've got no.
And the constitution says that, with respect, Madam Mayor, the constitution allows for three councillors and up to three independent directors, yeah.
Yeah. I, all right, any other comments? And we'll check that one. No more comments? All right, all those in favour? Okay, that takes us to eleven, which is the corporate and community services reports. Eleven point one, which is a financial overview report for June, twenty twenty three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll move that council receives and accepts the June, two thousand and twenty three finance overview report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thanks, councillor McCray. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is the June accounts and they're un- un-audited at this stage, although the audit process is continuing throughout the year. I'd just like to say we finished the year very strongly and this is largely due to such things as the, the advanced financial assistance grants from the federal government coming through and also the flood damage. So those figures are nine million and nine point three million, but it's left council in quite a healthy position, finishing well ahead on, on the budget that we proposed earlier. Having said that, the expenses were well in check and commendments to the, the staff and the management for being able to stay well within budget. And we finished three point seven million dollars ahead of our projected expenditure, so that's, that's another achievement. There are, there are, of course, you know, circumstances that, that, that lead towards that, you know, possibly in staff vacancies and things as well. But overall, I think it's a great achievement. We've got the audit to come to confirm this, of course, and there'll be some changes to those figures by the time the audit's released around late August. And so it's nice to finish the year on track there. We've got a couple of the financial indicators looking really good now, eight point four for six, eight point four six percent for the for the surplus and also the, the net financial liabilities ratios is, is looking in order as well. It's at the right, right part of the target. So a couple of other things, the rates are outstanding, are still quite high, they're eight point seven seven million, but I note later in the agenda, there's some efforts there to recover some more of those really old outstanding rates. The loans are down to seventeen point two million. I'll just note that over the last year again, we haven't borrowed any more money, we're just paying down debt from previous terms. And the cash at the bank's very healthy as well, so we're sitting at unrestricted cash of fifty-eight million at present time. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillors? No. And, and look, I just want to reiterate that we need to take the whole of the finance team out for a coffee and cake because they've done a fantastic job. When we put the budget through last year, I think we had a four point, one point four deficit. And then at the end of the year, we had blown out to three point seven million. So to bring us in now at a small surplus is, is really great news, absolutely great news. So, you know, and, and handing down a new budget with a small surplus as well, I think, you know, we definitely owe these finance people some coffee and cake. All right. There's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Next one is eleven point two, which is the twenty-three, twenty-four procurement policy and financial delegations register. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council adopts the twenty twenty three slash twenty-four procurement policy version thirteen with the financial delegations register version six as presented.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Any comments on this one, Deputy Mayor?
So the procurement policy, not only is it due for, you know, regular routine reviews, but there were a few things picked up in recent audits, so this, this, these have been added now to correct that and to consolidate the procurement policy. So, yeah, I'll hand that back, thanks.
I have a comment. Were there track changes to where the changes were made on the policy? Because I went through looking for the changes, but I just couldn't see what changes had been made.
Councillor, just to reiterate, the main changes that were made were regarding contract variation threshold, so that's in ten point seven. So what, what that lets us do is guides the, the staff through the limits that they're allowed under the capital program. So that's the main change that's been made.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And now we go to eleven point three, which is the splashes overview report for June, twenty twenty three. Councillor Coghlan's away, so would any of the councillor like to move this?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the June, twenty twenty three splashes overview report as presented.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Councillor McCray, any, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
I can speak on behalf of it. I know we've spoken about this a number of times, but just seeing how financially viable it is to maintain those services over the winter months when there's limited use. Also, just looking at, at June, there's no, there's no power in the budget, I see. There's no electricity costs for, for June this year. The budget's ten thousand dollars, but last June, electricity was twenty-four thousand. So I'm just wondering why the budget is less than half the cost that it was last year and why there's no power in there this time? Do we pay three monthly or something?
I think the bill would be paid two monthly, wouldn't it?
Yes, the utility bill comes in every two months for splashes. We have, we do have a budget for utilities, but it's lumped up in one line in the general ledger, so it doesn't show up separately. It's included in materials and services, so, but it is included in there. So what's happened historically is that the budgeted amount has been less than actual, but we have installed some solar panels with the goal of reducing some of the electricity costs. However, that hasn't materialized, so there's some more work that needs to be done so that we leverage that solar investment.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Chilaya. And yes, look, at least we have in the budget now for more solar for council. So I'm really hoping that we can cut all these energy bills in half, if, if not more. All right, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Eleven point four is the environmental and biosecurity overview report for May twenty-three and June twenty-three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the Chair, I'll move the recommendation that council receives and accepts the May twenty twenty three and June twenty twenty three environmental and biosecurity overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Barwick.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, through the Chair, I'll just give the, part of the operational overview there is environmental services and biosecurity possessed, processed a total of one hundred and fifty-three service requests, searches, inquiries and complaints between May twenty twenty three and in June, twenty twenty three. Environmental services has followed up on the, on the post-inspection compliance report outlining any areas for improvement or correction. Environmental health officers inspected nine camping and caravan parks, which were compliant, along with eight sporting group canteens inspections. Post-compliant inspection reports were sent out to each of the businesses or organizations with the follow-up inspection required, with one follow-up inspection required. Mobile food businesses that attended the Mount Isa show in June, twenty twenty three were inspected by the environmental services team.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Any questions on this one?
I'm just noting that there's no comparative data there to see if it's trending up or down. It's got May and June twenty-three, both twenty-three, but nothing to compare to the prior year, which is unusual for the reports.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address that.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor McCray. Any other, any other questions? Okay, then, all, all those in favour? And that's carried. The next one is eleven point five, which is the development and land use for financial year twenty-two, twenty-three quarter four overview report. Can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move through the Chair, the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the development and land use sections for year twenty-two, twenty-three quarter four overview report.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Barwick.
Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Thank you, Chair. Through just a small part of the overview is things are ticking along nicely, I guess. In Mount Isa, it's not kicking big goals, but it's moving along. Development app assessment applications during the quarter, council received eleven development assessment applications and approved seven of those. This is an increase in the number of applications received from the previous quarter being seven and an increase compared with the same quarter in the last financial year being seven. In the same period, council received two boundary clearance dismentation applications and approved one application with others still being processed. And on the building applications, there's a total of twenty notice of engagements received by council during the quarter. A total of twelve building approvals were issued by private building certifiers for this quarter. Now, this is a decrease compared with the previous quarter being twenty-two and a decrease compared with the same quarter in a previous financial year being twenty-three. Of the twelve building approvals, there's a total of twenty structures for which building permits were issued. The total value of building works approved by Mount Isa City, Mount Isa Local Government Area for this quarter was one point six, one point zero six million, which is a decrease of seven hundred and seventy thousand compared with the same quarter in the last financial year.
Any other questions on this one?
Further, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. I'm always dismayed to see non-residential workforce accommodation. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Eleven point six, which is economic development overview report for June, twenty twenty three. Someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the June, twenty twenty three economic development overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. It's a bit quiet in June with most of the committees, the advisory committees haven't met, so we look forward to the meetings in the new year. There's work being done on the Bonza Airline negotiations to attract them to Mount Isa to provide cheaper airfares for the residents. So that's still, still underway and there's been no, no final outcome to that yet, so we're hopeful there that we can adopt some of that. As everyone's aware, the. As everyone's aware, the new economic development strategy has been taken up by council now and been published. So that's well, that's good that, you know, the staff and the management can start their activities around the fifty-two, I think, items that are in that economic development strategy. And over the next three or four years, there should be some really good things coming out of that. I don't have too much else to mention at this stage, Madam Mayor, the... No, I think I'll leave it at that, thanks very much.
Thank you, and you said we were resuming in the new year, but you meant new financial year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just checking.
Count and speak.
Yeah, well, that'd be good because with those advisory committees now, it's been a while between meetings. So it'd be good to get that reinvigorated and not lose any interest. And with the, why councillors working with Bonza, I think I just want to remind the public that if there are residential fares with Qantas, and if you go online and if you have any trouble, by all means ring council or ring Qantas. You'll save twenty percent off your airfare if you're a resident. And all you need is a Qantas free canflyer number with a local Mount Isa address. And that can be a big saving, especially with the, if you're flying last minute and your only option is very large airfare. So don't forget that. Okay, all right, all those in favour. And that's carried. Eleven point seven, which is the community development overview report for June twenty-three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the June twenty-twenty-three community development overview report as presented.
Thank you, Councilor McCray, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Bowick.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Bowick. Can I, Councilor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, I would. I'd just like to say how good the MICE one hundred concert was on Sunday, celebrating Mount Isa's hundred years. It was great to have the Queensland Symphony Orchestra in Mount Isa, playing with William Barton. It was great to see some local people return as musicians and great to see our MICE people perform that, always live here. And also, a really nice element was to have Keith Cox talk about the history of music in Mount Isa over the last hundred years. So congratulations to the organisers of that event. Also, Mount Isa Street Festival's coming up on the ninth of August, that will be our next big event. And hopefully, fourth time lucky, we'll have Daryl Braithwaite perform for us. So we're all waiting for that one with bated breath.
Absolutely. Any questions or comments, councillors?
I'll just, through the Chair, I'll make a note that the Hole-in-One Challenge is actually on this weekend coming up. So, yeah, if encouraged, all, any residents who want to go out and have a look, it'll be good, yeah, so.
Yeah, sorry, Deputy Mayor, I hadn't got down that far yet.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realise. I thought you'd finished, sorry. You were taking a breath there.
Sorry.
My apologies.
Country University Centre, that's coming along nicely. Council has just about completed that role. The condition of grant funding has all been approved, the lease is about to be finalised. So council's only part left to that is to do with managing the capital works moving forward. So congratulations to that whole team for getting that up and happening. That's going to be a great addition to the town. Moveit NQ is continuing with dance, fitness boxing, Pilates and yoga. They've got some great numbers going along there. So if you want to get out, exercise, I guess be social with other community members, look out for those free Moveit NQ classes. Also, as the deputy pointed out, we've got the Outback Masters Golf this weekend. And also, the Good Shepherd Catholic Parish is having their multicultural festival on the first of September as well. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. And we are in the process of recruiting a new director for that that department we'll report to. And just with regard to the hundred years, one of the things I'd like to see is a sort of a matter of urgency is Mount Isa reaching out to either Channel Nine or one of the weather shows to come to Mount Isa the week of rodeo or the weekend of rodeo, because it's a significant event. It's probably going to be the biggest event in Queensland, especially on the calendar. So it would be good to see a few more boxes tick now for the hundred years coming into the last six months.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that's a great idea. And it'd be good to reach out and do that in conjunction with rodeo. So might need to get in contact with them about that one. Can I just add one more thing? I know this is coming up in a later report, but the NQ Sports Star Awards are coming up on the tenth of September. Those nominations are opening, and this report just outlines the categories. In the past, there's been maybe four or five categories, but this year, there's quite a number. There's Sports Star of the Year, Rural and Remote Sports Star of the Year, Junior Sports Star of the Year, Rural and Remote Junior Sports Star of the Year, Athlete with a Disability, NQ Sports Star Team, NQ Junior Team, Masters Volunteer of the Year, Service to North Queensland Sport and Sporting Excellence Award. So that's quite a number of awards. So if you can think of anyone that is worthy of one of those, get your nominations in. But like I said, there is a further report coming up later in the meeting for that.
Thank you. And where are they hosting the awards dinner this year?
In Mackay.
Mackay, okay. And do we help with any of that, getting people?
Yes, I was going to bring that up when we got to that report. It is in Mackay. And I was proposing not to move in this meeting, but just to have some discussion around whether we could potentially buy the tickets for the people that are attending, because it is quite expensive. We can't help with travel and accommodation, because it is such a large expense. But it does cost the people that usually go to these awards, they pay for it year after year. So it would be good if council could contribute in some fashion. And I think the most economical way for us to contribute may be just to buy the ticket to the event if they're going to pay for their travel and accommodation.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I just add as well, which is of interest around community development, that Councilor McCray and myself presented to the Queensland Multicultural Advisory Committee, the state body, during last week. And that was to report on an exchange trip that we had done, which was funded by Welcoming, I always get this wrong, Rural Welcoming Communities Exchange, America and Australia. And that was the first part in a series of exchanges where we have a look at the opportunities for migrants and workforces in another place, another country compared to what we're doing here. So we've presented that well. Councilor McCray was on site and used her excellent PowerPoint skills to deliver that, so that was quite good. And we made some recommendations around decentralisation policies and also additional, you know, supporting services for a community like Mount Isa to accept migrant groups to come in and work and support the huge amount of vacancies in the workforce here. So we will continue on with that with Welcoming Australia later this year. I think in October, we do another exchange, which is in Australia, in Queensland, in Toowoomba, I believe. So we've got that part to look forward to as well. And the American contingent will be coming over to join us as well during there. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. And I was present, and Councilor McCray did a very good job of presenting that. Keeping state government, you know, what we need from the state government aside, what do you think, you know, when you went over there, what things could we implement as a city or a council, which we weren't relying on services, or what do you think we could bring to Mount Isa sort of, or implement in Mount Isa that would welcome new people or make it easy for new people from overseas to come?
Yeah, look, it's a two-part thing, and it was outlined, you know, quite clearly in that. And actually, we probably should provide that report directly to councillors as well, for their own information. The, the, Councilor McCray might want to add to this, but the first part is that, you know, we want to make sure that we're a welcoming community, and we do everything we can to attract migrants to the city. But having said that, it's where the people come from, which countries, and what supports they have when they get here, so they can encourage them to stay. Because you don't want them to come and stay for two years and move to Sydney or something. You want to try and make the whole environment very, very welcoming and accept their cultures and work with their cultures and develop that kind of an environment, so it's really, really comfortable for them to come here. And there's lots that we can do. I mean, I'm of the view that Mount Isa has done that organically because of the nature of the mining industry over decades and decades. You know, we've had various migrant groups come here and build communities. But I'd like to see a more modern approach to that by our council, so that, you know, we could attract the right type of workers here, as well as their families, and make them feel welcome and comfortable here. And I'm talking about jobs at all ranges, you know, from the entry-level retail jobs right through to the accounting and mining professionals and those sorts of things. So I just think we could be a bit more focused on that as a council and a bit more, you know, constructive in developing strategies around attracting those migrants to the city.
Thank you. Councilor McCray, if you happen to...
Yeah, I think what the deputy mayor said was right. There are two parts. So he was talking about attracting people to the town, which is crucial. But it's also about how you're engaging with the people that are already here and also indigenous people and traditional owners. So I think we've started doing that by bringing all, like, the service providers and not-profits in around the table. But a big message, and from what we saw in America, I think the way that those organisations get funded is a different model. So there doesn't seem to be that commercial and confidence and competition between organisations. They're a lot more aligned and happy to work together. I think we're starting down that track, but I think we could do that a lot, a lot better. So, yeah, I guess openness, willingness to work together and to service the community, I think, was a big learning.
Yeah. And one of the questions I was asked by a member of the multicultural council was what is council doing currently, which was a really good question. And, you know, we are definitely holding a lot of free events, which is trying to bring the community together and give people opportunities to come together that aren't going to hit their hip pocket and bring us together as a city. But it was, it was an interesting question, because we, I hadn't given it a lot of thought prior to that. So I think that, you know...
Yeah, I think that's where I mentioned, you know, that my view was it is here, it's organic, it's not focused on, it's not programmed. But we do, if you look at our own workforce, for example, it's largely built, you know, with indigenous people from, you know, First Nations people coming into a lot of jobs here. But also, we attract a lot of migrants into working here, you know. And we provide those opportunities for people. And I think if you look across our workforce, it's quite multicultural in a lot of ways. And, but we don't, as I said, we haven't got a, you know, a specific programme to do that. And it could be improved, could be modernised, yeah.
That's right.
And I think CAMHS is holding those programmes in the library, like conversational English. And they do a lot of great work with new people coming to town, grouping people together, holding workshops for kids in the school holidays and meeting and greetings. So a shout out to Theresa at CAMHS, she does a great job. I think that's funded through the Catholic Church.
Absolutely. Theresa does amazing job in that regard. And I guess, you know, one of the things I believe impacts on people coming to Mount Isa, whether it's from overseas or not, is housing, you know, that's a... And, you know, when we opened, as a city, opened up the doors to the world to come here, mine had built a lot of houses here. So we had houses for, you know, and they're still here. Sunset, it's, you know, clearly it's town view. So those houses are still here. And we need to maybe try and make sure that there is the housing that's available there. And maybe businesses who are looking to get people from overseas have a plan so they can offer them housing in the first instance to get them on their feet, so they can move forward. But to me, housing is going to be a critical part of attracting people to Mount Isa and making that affordable so that they can get on their feet and maybe get a deposit and buy their own home. So that's probably one thing as a council, we've been looking to, a new suburb. But as I looked through that report, and I, you know, there's two, you know, there's very, very few new builds in Mount Isa now. You know, we're lucky to get one or two a year, which is really disappointing. And then when we do see new builds, you know, to have it to be for non-residential accommodation, that's really disappointing as well. So maybe something else we need to put some pressure on. We need people to come and live here. And totally get fly-in, fly-out is good for small projects that go for five months or maybe eighteen months, but not ongoing. That's just, you know, they're going to destroy mining communities all across Australia if this keeps up. And, you know, we can host, you know, more than twenty thousand, there's no doubt about it. All right, well, thanks very much. That was good conversation. If there's no more, all those in favour. And that's carried. Now, this takes us to one we've already discussed, but it's eleven point eight, which is the North Queensland Sports Foundation twenty-three North Queensland Sports Star Awards councillor delegation. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the Chair, I'll move the recommendation that council delegates councillor Peter McCray and councillor Paul Sretton to assess the local nominations for the twenty-twenty-three North Queensland Sports Star Awards and select the relevant nominees per category as council's submission to the North Queensland Sports Foundation.
Thank you, Councilor Fortune, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Bowick.
Thank you, Councilor Bowick. Councilor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Well, just a bit of the overview in the background. The North Queensland Sports Star Awards opened on the second of July twenty-twenty-three and closed on Sunday, the tenth of September twenty-twenty-three. Submissions from council are due to the North Queensland Sports Foundation on the fifteenth of September twenty-twenty-three. Due to the short period of time for assessment, it's not possible to put through the nominations through council for ratification. So that is why we're following up with that recommendation. As Councilor McCray said before, there are a number of different categories. And we urge the community and the sports, sporting community to come forward and nominate their people to be assessed for the North Queensland Sports Foundation Awards.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, sorry, I said the wrong date before. I said the date that the awards close was the actual date of the event. It's the fourth of November in Mackay, sorry.
Ah, yep.
And this will be the eighth year that councillor Sretton and myself have done this job, so we've got it pretty much down pat.
Absolutely. All right, if there's no more comments, all those in favour. And that's carried. Eleven point nine, which is the PCYC Request to Change Scope of Approval Grant, the Ruby Programme. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I can do that. I'd like to move that council approves a change of scope to the PCYC Ruby Rise Up Be Yourself Programme to permit the utilisation of previously approved community grant funds to upskill a PCYC employee to enable the delivery of the programme.
Thank you, Councilor McCray, can I get a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Councilor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, I think this might be the third time that I've moved that one. It keeps coming back to council, because they haven't been able to secure staff to actually run the programme. I guess they have the same issue as lots of us trying to deliver projects. They have the money, but not the people to actually deliver. It's great they've had a change of tack, they're going to train someone in fitness that can be used for the Ruby Programme, but then also be used for other programmes to do with youth and fitness within the PCYC. So, yeah, it's great to see that finally coming to fruition.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour. And that's carried. That takes us to eleven point ten, which is merchandise allocation. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'd like to move that council approves the CEO to approve any distribution of merchandise.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Councilor Fortune. Any comments on this one, Councilor McCray?
Yes, I guess council has distributed merchandise in the past at all of our events, but this just formalises the process more. So it's great to have a formal policy around it.
Absolutely. Any other comments?
No, I think it's a good move, Madam Mayor, and I support it. Yeah, there's times when I've thought that myself and other councillors have been at things where we'd like to distribute some merchandise, you know, that reflects Mount Isa and advertises Mount Isa, that sort of thing. And it's always been a bit, how do we get hold of this stuff? And then you kind of, you don't want to go directly to staff to do it. It'd be good to just have a bit of a conduit to the CEO to say, oh, I'd like to take some coins here, or that sort of thing, yeah.
And I think it's important, especially if you're representing Mount Isa City Council and someone's offering you a gift and you can't reciprocate at times.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
All right, if there's no more comments, all those in favour. All right. If there's no more comments, all those in favour. Uh, deputy mayor?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes.
And that's carried. Okay, that leads us to eleven point eleven, which is the Regional Arts Development Fund for round three. Um, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move. Madam Mayor, the council endorses the R A D F Committee Recommendation to Approve Rachel Wright Art to Receive Three Thousand Five Hundred Fifty Dollars, excluding GST, under round three of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three R A D F funding for her project entitled Regional Resin Arts Workshops.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. This is a, a, yeah, sort of a um, it's a really nice little project and um, it'll bring something different to Mount Isa where people can um, learn, you know, skills around um, using resin within uh, timberwork and um, and that. So they, the, the proponent holds a uh, resin workshop and it's proposed to be held at out back at Isa in September. And they can, they can learn skills and they'll come out of it making a, a cheese board or a coasters or wall art or perhaps a lazy Susan that, that is um, is uh, you know, modified with resin um, throughout the um, throughout the piece. So, and they're allowed to keep those items at the end of the workshop. So it's, it's a really good community um, um, uh, workshop. Thank you.
That sounds.
Yeah, through the chair. I'll just note that it's the resident workshops being held at the outback at Isa, which is a good use of the facility. And uh, they're making cheese boards and, and coasters uh, or uh, and, and a la- lazy Susan. Uh, they created participants can, they, they can take them home at the end of the workshop. And um, you know, the uh, the workshops are um, uh, provide the uh, equipment and the um, safety instructions for the use of all those uh, resins too as well.
I'm through the chair. Will that be um, will there be a charge for going to that workshop? I'm just wondering how that's working financially because we're getting someone up from the Gold Coast. Do they charge and is it like a business for them?
Uh, if it is, it's very minimal because they, they are holding these workshops right through. Um, so I'd, I'd have to get that back to you on that. I just, I don't know if there's actually a charge per person. Sometimes they, there's a small materials charge or something, you know, um, um, and, and it would have ticked all the boxes for the R A D F um, application as well. Um, so, yeah, I'll have to come back to you on that.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that um, is item twelve, which is the Infrastructure Services Report and twelve point one, which is the Major Projects Overview Report for June twenty-twenty-three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the chair, I'll move that council receives and accepts the June twenty-twenty-three Major Projects Overview Report.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, councillor McCrae. Um, councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, thank you. Uh, through the chair, the um, a delivery plan for the execution of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four program is being prepared. Weekly meetings, reports help to ensure the current team and projects are progressing. Resourcing and materials are still an ongoing concern. Um, attention is being focused on the material supply uh, to ensure that this remains under control. Uh, the attached table uh, provides an overview of the progress against the budget. Uh, and the background of a few of the uh, projects being done are the MRF, the Materials Recovery Facility, uh, the Building Contractors Ward in June, uh, the relocation of the uh, current site facilities uh, to be complete by the end of July. Uh, the Family Fun Park, the project is now closed out and handed over to the Parks and Gardens team with a detailed maintenance schedule. Uh, final cost reports are under review. Uh, the Lions Park uh, basketball court. Uh, the permanent hoops and backboards are still awaiting installation. Uh, the line marking contract will complete works once it's in place and project closed out when it's, uh, it can be initiated when that's taken place. Uh, it's a ten year place. Uh, the project is sixty-five percent complete as, as at the seventh of July. Uh, detailed reports and progress meetings are being conducted weekly. Uh, the contractor is on target with contract dates um, with October being the practical completion date. Uh, the soft opening date of ninth of August is being reviewed as, as the kitchen containers uh, at risk of delay and is expected arrival date of the fifteenth of July, uh, which hasn't been confirmed as yet.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Any questions on this one? Well, I know there's going to be a lot of staff that are looking forward to this air conditioning going in before summer. Very hot summer last year. All right.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I might just um, ask if I can through the chair, um, where the smart meter installations are at, at the moment. Um, I, I know we've done the bulk of the work, I believe. I'll just um, see if we're approaching. Put Stephen on the spot, see what we're, we're up to, yeah, thanks.
There's uh, when I last looked, which was probably a week and a half ago, we had five thousand five hundred installed of seven thousand three hundred. They're concentrating on all the difficult ones now. So, and some of those are up to their fourth letter to try and get access. But um, the, the fourth letter, in, in the third letter, we foreshadowed that we might relocate the meter to the footpath uh, and charge them the difference, which is about eight hundred and seventy dollars if we can't get access. So the fourth letter will give them one last chance and a date after which the meter will be relocated to the footpath and we will seek to recover the, the cost of that from the uh, from the owner. Uh, simply because they're not responding, you know, dogs, fences, locks, et cetera, which we understand. But uh, we do need to replace the, the meters. So we would just like people to provide access. We'll change the meter. Generally speaking, it takes less than fifteen minutes. Um, but if they're not going to respond, well, we still need to replace the meters. We'll relocate it externally.
I think too, there's another issue. The meters are two types. There's like pit ones, some that are in like a little bit of a, a hole and they need a different crew to do that.
It's generally the same crew, but uh, they've been, if, if they need to clean it out, they have to wait for the um, vac trucks. So the vac truck's not available all the time.
Okay, so that may be an issue with some people as well.
Yeah, but we, we are getting sort of to the pointy end where we've, and we've had all sorts of interesting uh, installations. But we've worked all the, the issues out now. So it's now just a case of uh, closing out the, the remainder, the commercials are all done. Um, some of the larger, the thirty-two and forty millimeters were in the last batch. So some of those haven't been done. All the fifties, a hundred, hundred and fifties have been done. So uh, um, they expect to be finished and gone by October, which is getting closer by the day.
Um, Stephen, just a further question is, sorry, thanks through the chair. Um, the uh, is there sort of um, connections with engagement with the community when there are spikes and all that now in the, in the usage that, that are appearing? Like because of these um.
Yeah, we've um, we've started running a re- report and we've only um, done this in the last couple of weeks. We're looking at running it probably every two weeks because the meters will report if it believes there's uh, as a moderate or significant leak on site. So we've got about uh, seventy letters to go out to say there appears to be a, a significant leak and in the, what's moderate and what's significant um, can be set. But one of these significant leaks um, was thirty thousand liters a day. So we're hoping there's some problem there because that's a hell of a lot of water. Um, that'd be thirty, that's thirty kilolitres, be thirty dollars a day worth of water. But it would soon push you into the uh, three dollars a kiloliter category too. So um, so we, we can do that. Um, I'm waiting for a final quote. It wasn't part of the original contract, but a quote for the, the app side of it too. Uh, now that we've got the bulk of the meters, we'll look to push out an app in the next twelve months. So then people can set up their own alerts and monitor their own usage.
Yeah, that'll be a good, a good outcome from that. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, how far away is that? Sorry?
The, the app?
Yeah.
Uh, as soon as I get a quote from them, really. So they, they should have done it by now. But let, let's say September.
Okay, yeah. Very good. Look forward to that. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Stephen. If there's no more questions, all those in favour, and that's carried. Okay, so that takes us now to item twelve point two, which is Waste Management Overview Report for May and June for twenty-twenty-three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the May twenty-twenty-three and June twenty-twenty-three Waste Management Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on this one?
Um, so um, the big ticket item, I suppose, is the work started on the uh, materials um, recycling facility um, project at the tip. Um, so that, that included the uh, relocation of the site office and um, just preparation work for the um, the construction of the MRF going forward. Um, yeah, so um, yeah, the, the rest of the um, the work is, is fairly um, standard work being conducted. The um, Department of Environment and Services have conducted an audit on the landfills and recovery resource areas. So um, they've identified a range of issues and they're, they're presently um, being addressed by management. Um, yeah, that's uh, happy to report that. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors, or comments? All right, Stephen's standing by.
I do, I, I will ask, Stephen, um, is the uh, everything seems to be pretty smooth with the rubbish collection, the curbsides? That all, um, are you getting many sort of um, complaints back from the community or anything like?
No, very, very few complaints. Um, would like to report the contractors actually showed up yesterday for the MRF. So they're busy pegging things out at the moment and getting things ready because the first thing they have to do is move the existing site office out of the way. So um, they should have things in place, ready to move that probably early next week. Uh, then they'll start excavating for, for the slab and uh, work will commence apace from there.
And, and the curbside channeling, uh, the curbside uh, pickups, are they with the contractor that's um, all fairly steady going on?
We haven't had any um, complaints recently. We've got the old complaint of a missed, missed bin, which gets attended to. But there's been no sort of systemic or serious complaints or issues.
Yeah, when it first started, there was a few things you heard in the community, but it seems to have settled right down now. So I assume it's all working pretty well by the sound of it, yeah.
Yeah, there, there was all, there's still a lot of people that put their bin out late and then ring up to say they didn't collect the, the bin. But uh, I think most people also realise that the contractors video it. So if the bin was not there when they went past, they can prove it was not there when they went past. So that tends to make people adjust their stories.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I just bring up again, I know I'm, I brought up in the past that, that that garbage, garbage truck is um, taking breaks in going up over the gutter, over footpath, over sprinklers and parking up. Um, it's still ongoing, as recent as yesterday. Has there been no change in that behaviour?
Well, follow up with JJ and see what, what they're doing there.
Because it, it is going to ruin our infrastructure, I feel.
Thanks, Stephen. Thanks, councillor McCrae. Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. Next one is twelve point three, which is a request for variation to contract for Mount Isa City Council for the R F T Primary Clarifiers Repair/Replacement. Would someone like to move, move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, the council accepts the quote from Repump Australia Proprietary Limited and accepts a variation of seven hundred and eight thousand and ninety dollars, excluding GST, to the contract M I C C R F T Primary Clarifiers Repair/Replacement in accordance with section two, three, five B of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. So there was a contract um, originally um, issued to um, do some work on the clarifiers there and, and upgrade them. Um, which have uh, have been around for many, many decades. And um, they, as, as often happens, they've discovered there's a, some um, underlying um, problems with the reinforcing and the uh, the concrete surrounds to the clarifying um, tanks. So uh, this, this particular variation is to rectify that and um, extend the life of the, the current clarifiers, uh, the tanks um, for another uh, you know, forty to fifty years, I'm advised. So um, yeah, so uh, this is uh, it's an unfortunate variation that we've had to um, had to occur and it's expensive. But um, it's a necessary one and um, and we'll keep our um, water treatment facility in top order. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. Any questions on this one? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. Yes, we have no general business and that will, um, now, um, so um, I, I will, we'll now adjourn this ordinary meeting and then reassume in confidential. So um, thank you, everyone. We'll, we'll break for ten minutes. So thank you everyone. We'll break for 10 minutes. Welcome back. Would someone like to move a motion that, from the officer's recommendation, to move into a closed meeting? That council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting closed to the public in accordance with section 25J of the Local Government Regulation 2012. Boarding point one, appointment of an interim chief executive officer. This matter is considered to be confidential under section 254J of the Local Government Regulation and the council is satisfied that discussion on this matter is an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with the appointment, discipline or dismissal of a chief executive officer. Boarding point two, notice of intention to sell land for over G rates and charges. This matter is considered to be confidential under the section 254J of the Local Government Regulation and the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to taking of land by local government under Acquisition of Land Act 1967. Boarding point three, acquisition of property assessment hashed 0499234000. This is considered to be confidential under section 254J of the Local Government Regulation and the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to commercial matter involving a local government for which a public discussion would likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Boarding point four, request to waiver infrastructure charges for the material change of use of healthcare centre at Sixburg Street. Manizza described as lot 11 on plan, MPH 13992. This matter is considered to be confidential under section 254J of the Local Government Regulation and the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to public interest as it deals with the local government budget. Boarding point five, concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges for property assessment 0719600000. This matter is considered to be confidential under section 254J of the Local Government Regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions. Could I get someone, I'll move that motion. Can I get someone to second that motion? Thank you councillor McCrae. All those in favour? And that's carried. We're now in closed.
Thanks everyone. Could I get someone to second the recommendation that council moves out closed council into open council to discuss 14.1, appointment of interim chief executive officer, 14.2, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges, 14.3, acquisition of property assessment number 0499234000, 14.4, request to waive infrastructure charges for a material change of use for a healthcare centre at Sixberg Street, Mount Isa, described as lot 11 on plan, MPH 13992, 14.5, concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges for property assessment 071960000. Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second Barwick.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. All those in favour, and that's carried. We're now in open business. And that brings us to item 14.1, appointment of interim chief executive officer.
And I'll declare an interest in that matter.
Yep, so Tim has declared a conflict of interest and we'll be leaving the room. 14.1, appointment of interim chief executive officer. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, that council appoint Mr Tim Rose as acting chief executive officer for a period of 12 months from the 20th of July 23, and the mayor be authorised to enter into a contract of employment, and that the delegation to the CEO to appoint an acting CEO during a vacancy in the position pursuant to section 195a of the local government act be revoked.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
All those in favour, and that's carried. That brings us to item 14.2, which is a notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, madam mayor, that council resolves to a) sell the land in the below schedule pursuant to section 142 of the local government regulation 2012, and b) delegate to the chief executive officer its power to a) give a notice of intention to sell the land to all interested parties under section 143 of the local government regulation 2012, and b) take all further steps required under sections 141, 142, 143, 144, 145 and 146 of the local government regulation 2012 to effect the sale of the land. The schedule is below, assessment number 0032/0000-000, lot 2 on survey plan 206660, assessment number 00697-00000-000, lot 12 on Crown Plan, MPH 7994, assessment number 0195900000-00, lot 9 on Crown Plan, MPH 22085, sorry, MPH 22085, assessment number 04260-00000-00, lot 23 on Crown Plan, MPH 22068, assessment number 03124-00000-000, lot 14 on Crown Plan, M758194, assessment number 04505-00000-000, lot 5 on Crown Plan, MPH 21950, assessment 04793-00000-000, lot 31 on Crown Plan, MPH 21963, assessment number 06195-00000-000, lot 115 on Crown Plan, MPH 13991, assessment number 06682-00000-000, lot 118 on Crown Plan, MPH 40095.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. All those in favour, and that's carried. 14.3, which is the acquisition of property assessment number 0499234000, would someone like to move the council's recommendation?
I'll move, madam mayor, that council approved the purchase of the residential freehold property at 23 Emlyn Close at the offer price of 425k and approved capital renovation budget of 15k, and approved legal fees estimate of 5k for relevant property transfers and searches.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Have I got a second for that motion? For one of the second, we will let that recommendation lay on the table laps.
I'll leave madam mayor for this.
Aye, thank you. So this is item 14.4, and the deputy mayor has a conflict of interest and will be leaving the room. And this one's a request to waive the infrastructure charges for the material change of use for a healthcare centre at Sixberg Street, Mount Isa, described as lot 11 on plan, MPH 13992. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Well, madam mayor, we've got a note.
Oh, that's right. So what, because the deputy mayor has a conflict of interest, we now find ourselves without a quorum?
Yep.
Would someone like to move, oh, do we do that when we get the call?
No, we just note, we just note that there is no quorum present for this discussion. So what we can do, madam mayor, is when the, under the, under the local government act under 150 EU, there's a procedure where no quorum exists to decide on a matter.
Yep.
So what we will do is recall councillor Barwick to the chambers and then we can move a motion to delegate that matter.
Perfect. Can we call the deputy mayor back in please?
Just for the council's information, what we're going to recommend, which doesn't contribute in the local government act, we'll just place in the, in the minutes, a councillor does not contribute being section 150 EK, EM, EQ or ES5 by participating in a discussion or being present while the matter is being discussed and voted on for the purposes of delegating the matter or making a decision under subsection 2b or c. So councillor Barwick can participate in a discussion that delegates this matter to the CEO, and I'd like to recommend under section 257 of the local government act that we delegate this item to the, to the CEO.
Thanks, Tim. Would someone like to move a recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move that the item get delegated to the CEO for negotiation.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
All right. All those in favour, and that's carried.
Thank you.
Takes us now to 14.5, which is a concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges for property assessment 071960000000. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
For the chair will move it, yeah.
Well, madam mayor, if I can, I'd like to recommend to council that the matter lay on the table for a further month for some further information to be brought back to council.
I'm happy to move that the matter lay on the table.
Do we need to move motion for that, or is it just for one of the...
You can.
Okay. Would you, would someone like to move a motion please?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll move the motion at 14.5, concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges of 90971 for property assessment 071960000000, for the period 01012023 to 3006 2023, under sections 119, 121a and 122, 1a of the local government regulation 2012, due to financial hardship, lays on the table. Thank you.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. All those in favour, and that's carried. Well, that, that concludes this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council. I'd like to thank everyone for their participation.